Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the April 9th meeting of the River Falls Common Council. At this time, I'd ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance is as follows. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Biersted.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Gagnon.
Here.
Morissette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Page.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll have the approval of the minutes for the March 26, 2019, meeting.
I move for the approval of the minutes.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, bills with Mr. Gagne.
Mr. Officer, I move for the approval of the bills in the amount of $1,933,214.13, subject to the comptroller.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Next, we'll move into public comments, petitions, and requests. First on the item, first item on the agenda is public comment. If you have any comments about anything on the agenda now or later in the agenda that you feel you'd want to make now, please step forward, sign in, state your name and address, and let us know your thoughts.
My name is Elizabeth Bowden. I live across the street on Clark Street. I just want to say a couple things. First of all, I would like to thank you for this beautiful building and the gathering rooms that are made available for public listening and learning sessions. Last evening, I was pleased to join with several other community members with a presentation that UW Lacrosse students brought to this community looking at tourism. They are putting together several, you know, proposals and analytics, and it was just, again, reassuring and refreshing to get together and talk with like-minded people in our community. So, thank you again. Everyone should know that this building has great meeting facilities. And just for that note, just I would appreciate continued communication with how the public meetings are held. I know that there are public notices posted, but not everyone that comes to this community knows where those are. So, I just encourage and support all types of communication that you can do. I'd also like to comment that during last meeting's public comment, we were informed that commuter rail is very likely returning to the area via private and public partnerships. I hope that you're going to be able to be a part of that conversation that's coming to the community in the upcoming weeks and going forward. Wouldn't it be amazing if the depot area could again actually be a transit depot area? The future is unknown, yet the future land use plan should be for future councils and future community members to decide the use of the land. There is a lot of interest and commitment to preservation, and with the impacts of the larger area on the Kinney, I feel like it is preemptive and dismissive of public opinion to have approved developer plans before the public hearing periods. Though the city, through the city's present choices, tourism and redevelopment are being decided and directed rather than aided by this proposed development of housing projects. You have plenty of other things in the works throughout the community, and I endorse that. I'm excited about that. I, however, again, encourage you to look at the other housing problems that exist. Several pockets of poverty and systemic housing issues already exist. Rezoning this potential redevelopment of Clark and City for multi-housing instead of leaving it downtown commercial and leaving the possibility of any unforeseen exciting changes like commercial rail coming to our community, I feel that would be shortsighted in terms of natural preservation and this city's large commitment to future generations. I don't want to see my children and their children sacrificing, being able to have to miss out on what we, what we really have going in this present moment. I believe your responsibility as elected officials is to be the best stewards possible. We do not know the future of this river, but we can and should do more and as much as possible now to protect and preserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Chelsea Richter. I live up the hill over here, and I wasn't sure if I was going to talk tonight. Despite my nerves, I am here, but the reason I wasn't sure if I wanted to speak is it seems that after doing some digging, that the decision on this rezoning project have already been made. Not a lot of people like to come down to City Hall and involve themselves in these processes, and this is part of why, is because this is the comment period now, here at the end of the process. I don't know what is expected to come of citizens' comments and concerns during this comment period now that the plans have been made and negotiations have been done and money has been secured. I had an opportunity to speak to a city employee after last meeting about this apartment. He was, he was kind enough to give us a lot more information about this building project on the property next to the river. At one point, I was told that if I want to be involved in this project, I can always keep an eye out to ensure the developers put in the setback and the benches that the city negotiated for. Benches. Now, I'm a biology graduate of UWF. That includes courses in river ecology, and hydrology, and ecology, and land use planning. As a lifelong, I'm a lifelong resident. I've walked these waters as a child, as a student in waiters with equipment, as a neighbor to the homeless families in River Falls at our neighbor's place, which is right near the river, as a neighbor to this section of the river, and as a mother with my children in tow, splashing around in the Kinney. My concern about this project is personal. It's also educated. It's invested, and with all due respect, my energy is not best left to benches. Myself and another neighbor who's spoken at these meetings and spoke at this one, were also told by this employee that our concerns and development ideas would surely be addressed during future projects that the city is already undertaking. I asked when the public would be notified with details about those projects, and he became very quiet. This lot adjacent to City Hall along the river was city property, and it was sold very quietly. I live up the hill. I walk here all the time. There was no visible notice that it had been sold. Yes, it has been slated for development for over 10 years, but we have learned a lot in those 10 years, particularly in the last three or four, about river health and about our public's desire to free the Kinney, and we are ignoring it. What this project lacks in public involvement, it also lacks in forward thinking. If you can ask my neighbor Sheldon what this area was down here. He lives up on the hill over there, and he's about a million years old, and he'll tell you all about it anytime you want to hear. It was a granary with farmers and shops and a hair salon. It was a social hub that brought agricultural people from the country into town to relax and converse and spend money. City is currently asking for tourism ideas. It was a social hub. It could be this again, if kept as a public space. Now, I don't think it takes an engineer or land use planner to notice that that is a bad spot for apartments. It's basically a glorified flood plain, and unpredictable weather events are going to keep happening. Now, in the paper, we can be really happy about our retention ponds and our attention that has been paid to run, river runoff or water going toward the river, but we still had residents with water in their basements up to their ceiling in the spring as a result of very complicated water and weather. Water was pouring off the embankment, eroding the wall, supporting buildings on Main Street, and underground parking garage is super smart, and I'm very proud of that idea, but water flows off this hill, and it's going to be going into that basement, and it's going to be an issue forever. Also, part of this project is the idea that foot traffic will be very encouraged, and then people will be spending money downtown, but people do have cars. And the street design down here makes for a very incredible bottleneck. We're talking 70 households with one or two cars apiece leaving for work every day through two residential streets. Yes, 50 of those apartments are for 55-plus ideally. They won't have to drive every day, but raise your hand if you're 55 in this room and retired. Raise your hand if you know anyone who's 55 and retired. Thank you. They work. They commute, trust me. These buildings will also change the face of downtown. We've got the Nash Finch Building and the hotel. Those are large, and you can see them from any point on the walkway. This is going to be a four-story building comparable to the hotel. There's going to be power lines, tall ones removed. Those are huge, and that's the size we're talking about here. There's going to be expansion into the street because it's going to be curb-to-curb. It's going to be large, and it's going to be visible, and it's going to be a representation of the landscape of our city. And furthermore, a building has an expiration date. We're planning for the future, and buildings get old. This will last a generation or two before it needs an overhaul. Land doesn't need an overhaul. Grass and picnic tables, they don't need overhauls, and I just think that we can do better. Now, further plans for the future, I think we need a housing committee that is devoted to bringing housing to our lower-income citizens. We need housing. If we can create a plan to help residents transform and replace aging buildings near the city center for multifamily properties, we already have blocks rezoned and homeowners are interested. Let's expedite that process. In the lower-income families, they need, they're limited by finances and their assistance programs, and by the number of people in their household, if they have blended families, they need very large accommodations with many rooms. And a plan that would involve multiple houses downtown and involve citizens generating income from their own rentals would offer more diversified living opportunities and price points for a range of incomes, whether you're an elderly person looking to sell your home and downsize or someone who is in desperate need of housing with lots of children. But that's a separate issue. Let's get back to this property. This property's been a frozen asset. There's been virtually no investment, and yet it has been used independently by residents creatively for years as a place to unload a kayak, have a picnic, exercise a pet, I could go on. I say we should, and then we have intelligent people down here at City Hall who are saying, "Let's throw parties here. Let's have events," and we have, and they've been popular and easy to access. And I say, "Let's just improve on what smart people are already doing." The city wants tourism ideas. It's already a tourist destination. Let's give it a little bit of help. If we can reframe it as an upper Kinney kayak exit point, then people can get out of a kayak, buy a pot at Kinney Clay, or get lunch downtown, crash at the hotel, shop for antiques, grab a beer, all walking. And eventually, there could be opportunity for bike paths or train installations. It could be a play area or a community orchard or garden. These activities cannot be damaged by weather or by, and they don't need expensive infrastructure, and none of these can hurt the river. These activities create a generation of people who spend time as a tourist here. They will come back, and they'll come back with their kids, and their kids will grow up and come back here, spend time, buy houses. It creates a culture of activity and tourism that doesn't have an expiration date the way the building does. These are just a few ideas from one person, and there are people a lot smarter than me in town and think of what they could come up with. I mean, I received a letter because my house happens to be 300 feet from this facility, and I'm, I'm doing the math, and it looks like maybe 12 or 14 households got, got a letter. More people have seen the city Facebook reminder to relicence their dog than know about this project. I don't know how that is possible without intention. I know the information was put in the journal, but if you can look at what the readability is of people reading the journal who are under 30, I think you will find it as disturbingly lacking. The people that are going to have to deal with these issues moving forward are those people under 30, and they don't know about it. Thousands of people showed interest in our park project and our Kinney Corridor project, and if you tell them, they will come with ideas ready, passionate about this river. I asked Mr. Page if he would notify his Free the Kinney constituents via his Facebook page, and he saw my request and chose not to until right before the very, the very last meeting, though he has known about it for several months, and I don't understand that. Transparency is important, and I'm disappointed in the way this process has gone, but I digress. I'm not here to lecture. I'm just here to offer an alternative and simply ask for more voices. This property has been locked in concrete for generations, and we've unlocked it for a time, let it sit idle, planted no seeds to gather people here, but they came anyway. I'm asking that please not dispatch that so quickly. Please use it, and if we agree to this complex, it is locked in concrete again indefinitely. Now, this plan moves 70 households closer to the river in a four-story box with an expiration date so that we can cross our fingers that they'll get out on foot and spend money. How about thousands of people on foot, on a bike, in a kayak, enjoying the river every year and boosting the economy, creating memories, and coming back to do it again with their kids? Like I said, I wasn't sure if I was going to talk tonight. Public speaking is never comfortable, and this council does seem to have its mind made up, but this space is valuable, and someone ought to stand up and say something. Plan, please, with forethought. Build intention. Extend the comment period for this project and use what we've learned in the last 10 years to create something that will last longer than an apartment building.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else have anything new to add? If you could, if there's, if there's new comments to it, I'd appreciate that, maybe if...
I'm Joe Conrad, and I live on 420 Spring Street. That's the home of a former mayor of River Falls, by the way, Leslie K. I've lived there longer than he did. I would say this to you about the proposed Depot City Station Project, Proposal. I'd like for you to think about the fact that it's a mark of a mature person to be able to reconsider and think about when they might be on a mistaken path, and I think it could be a mark of a mature, a mature city council also. The history of cities and rivers is littered with old car hulks rotting, rusting out bed springs and sewer outfalls, but cities in this country have grown beyond that. River Falls is, has an excellent record in that regard, and I think we need to preserve that as much as possible. We've become a bird city. We're a tree city. We have the Kinney Connect. Maybe we're a fish city also. And I think that what we need to do is to consider as much as possible how this project fits into that. I believe that it, as an apartment building, it fits somewhere in the city. It should be somewhere in the city, but is, does it belong right here beside City Hall? The view of the Kinney Connect is heavily blocked on the Main Street side. There's history. You can't do anything about that. That's where River Falls grew up, but we also already have a lot of the large apartment buildings on North Main off the street, off North Main, but they block the view of the river. And personally, I think we should be able to do better than that on this side of the So, we need to think about the fact that if we're going to have a healthy river and a healthy community, we need healthy habitat, natural habitat along the river, along the banks. This proposal sort of rubs out any possibility of that, at least in this two-block stretch right outside here. No trees, fewer trees at least, no bushes, vines, native flowers, home spaces for birds or river-abiding wild animals. And I emphasize again, it's right by City Hall, and there's no better place that you have as a city to show any other city, as well as our own citizens, just how much we care for the Kinney Connect. I think a park here would be a far better use of the land. The other major thing I would address is that this sets a proposal, a precedent. You'll be rezoning some. I know there used to be conservancy on at least part of this land, and that's being removed as far as I can see from the proposal, and I think that's a step that, that future councils will, might look back on and think, "Well, gee, maybe we shouldn't have done that." So, I thank you for your consideration. I know it's a difficult job you have, and I appreciate the opportunity to say my remarks to you. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else with any other public comments? Yep, please step forward.
Good evening, everyone.
I could just ask you to sign in and with your name and address?
Oh, yes. Of course.
And let us know who you are.
My name's Lauren Evans, by the way. Some of you may know me on the board already, but I came to college at the university here, and I was introduced to it via Upward Bound Minneapolis program, but I was there as a actual facilitator. And what attracted to me, attracted me to River Falls was just this wonderful place where agriculture, natural environment, and urban people came together, and it was just magnificent. And after college, of course, I did that freak-out thing, and then I joined the service. I'm now a Navy veteran, and started going back to my mom's house. I came back to River Falls because it's the place where I received the most community and received the most support, and it was, it's been amazing. And so now, as I'm back, I've been communing, communing with my friends that supported me prior, and we just had this vision of River Falls being a place of creativity, of commerce, and of food. And so I was like, "Oh, no doubt. It would totally be supported by the city because the city's been so great thus far." But I see this proposal coming up, and I was like, "Oh, they'll definitely give a voice to the people. There'd definitely be consideration because this is River Falls. This is a great city. It's a place of innovation, of green space and activities." But then I'm hearing this as a surprise. Like, I wasn't planning on speaking this evening, but I have just been really taken aback, but I'm, I still have optimism. I still have a hope that these people who spoke this evening will be heard, and I thank you for giving them the floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Counsel President, I have a public comment.
Yep, Mr. Downing.
I'd like to wish our mayor a health recovery, a recovery, and former council member Jeff Bjork, who suffered a brain aneurysm, healthy recovery. Just keep him our thoughts and prayers. I'd also like to encourage everyone to go to River Falls Passenger Train Update from the St. Croix Valley Rail Group on April 24th at 7:00 PM at River Falls Library. As a community, we need to be prepared for having public transportation that includes them, and bring your questions and concerns. We want to make sure our community has input and is part of the decisions during this critical planning phase. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is recognition of Buddy Lucero. I'm going to come down here for that. So, I want to make a couple remarks about Buddy. I got to know Buddy when I first started actually on the Plan Commission before I was elected to the city council. So Buddy was my first point of contact in the city. So Buddy is retiring on April 18th after 20 years of service to the city. He served as the Community Development Director during that time. Buddy's career kind of has two bookends to it, if you will. The first one, his first project when he got here was to create the city's comprehensive plan, which is, if you're aware of what the comprehensive plan is, as a lot of us on the council are, and certainly staff, it's a monumental task. And the other end to the bookend is his work and leadership with the Kinney Corridor project. He also, in the meantime, has worked in things like the Cooperative Boundary Agreement with the town of Kinney Connect, and there's many other plans and projects that he's worked on through the years that, that will leave a lasting legacy for Buddy. The council would like to thank you, and I personally would like to thank you for not spending a lot of time on the Urban Chicken Ordinance. Those of you who know my comments on the Urban Chickens will understand that joke a little better, but these plans and projects were hu, huge contribution to the present and future for the city. We, we know you will enjoy working, you worked and enjoyed working alongside staff and the general public. Your way of working with people and caring for the process has made the projects even more enjoyable for everybody. As much as everyone is happy to see you start your well-earned retirement, there's no doubt that many people will also be sad the day you leave. You've made many friends here, and I'd like to hope that I'm included as one of those. We'll be sorry to see you go. I know the mayor is disappointed he can't be here tonight to provide you these comments, and I know he feels the same way, and I think I speak for the rest of the city council when I say thank you for your contributions. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, this is a little different. I have, as a planner, I got to say some words. I'm not, I don't know, no PowerPoint, no real big presentation, but, you know, 20 years, 20 years ago, I came here and I was looking, looking for a job and looking for a house, and what I found was a home. And I really thank the council, the staff, and the community to provide that kind of vision, that guidance, and so I'm very appreciative of it, and I want to thank you very much from my heart and for this opportunity, and I will enjoy my retirement, if I may shake your hand.
All right. Not that I'm going to run the rest of the meeting from down here, but our next item on the agenda is, I'll turn it over to Chief Young, and he's going to recognize the Police Officer of the Year for 2018. Gordy?
Officer Coburn. If you want to invite your family up, they can, they can come on up too if they want. Good evening, City Council, Council President. This is Officer Chris Coburn. He's an eight-year veteran with our department, and has a beautiful family. We're excited to announce that Chris is the 2018 Officer of the Year. This, this was voted on by his peers, and it was a unanimous decision. Officer Coburn is a field training officer, Glock armorer, tactical fitness instructor, a member of our uniform and equipment committee. He's a leader amongst his peers, and we have many of the peers in the back. He goes above and beyond what is expected. He quickly answers calls and does more than his fair share throughout his shift. He's always willing to assist others on their calls and without taking over the call. He does not complain about doing police tasks that are not so glamorous, such as parking enforcement and paper service. He embodies our department mission to protect with courage and serve with compassion. The second part, the compassion part, is probably his strongest suit amongst our officers. I think he's known as probably the most compassionate, and how he demonstrates that also is during his off-time, he volunteers for elementary and middle school coaching. He volunteers to coach the football team, baseball team, and basketball team. So, he keeps awful busy. We're proud him, proud of him to be working for us in the city, and we're honored to present him with the 2018 Officer of the Year Award. Congratulations. And also a sacrifice for the family who probably should get this award too. The kids, we have some candy bars.
Wow. You have to control that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And then also afterwards, after the council meeting, we're going to have some cookies, not doughnuts, so, in the training room, and also some water. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations again, Chris. All right. Keeping with the public safety theme, Sergeant Bangor will give us a recap of the emergency services.
Thank you for having me tonight, and once again, congratulations to Officer Coburn. I came up with Chris from the same hiring process, and he is everything that was described of him tonight. So, I have our annual emergency preparedness and severe weather hazards presentation. Once again, it's Severe Weather Awareness Week here in River Falls, or I'm sorry, throughout the nation, and... And with the upcoming weather event, we're obviously very aware that we're still susceptible to these things. On Thursday this week, we'll be doing our statewide special tornado drill. We do two activations of the weather siren, one at 1:45 PM during the day and the second at 6:45 PM for families that are home in the evening. And then throughout the season, we set off the weather sirens on the fourth Monday of every month, with the exception of May because of Labor Day, I'm sorry, Memorial Day weekend, we move that date out or move that date back a week. And this is the locations of the weather sirens currently in the city of River Falls. And so when do we activate the sirens as a police department? We changed this policy a few years ago. So the sirens are activated in River Falls when there's immediate danger of a tornado or a severe thunderstorm with dangerous winds of 70 miles an hour or greater, or the storm conditions exist and a public sighting of a tornado has occurred. Last year, one of our activations occurred due to a sighting of a tornado in Pierce County when we couldn't find specific location on the storm. We activate just to give the citizens a chance to check the weather on their own and stay updated on the situation. So what types of hazards do we typically encounter in River Falls or this region? Are the number ones we, number one hazards we witness, obviously are weather-related or natural. We experienced some of that this winter with the flooding coming off, the fast thaw and the deep snow and the rain. Also susceptible tornadoes and other severe weather incidents, severe thunderstorms, high winds. And then other hazards that could be an issue in River Falls are fire hazards, structure, wildland, and brush. We do have a significant amount of wooded area with the large parks in the city. Hazardous materials that would be related to some of the facilities we might have in our industrial parks that would have those things on hand. Or the things that come through the city that you might not always think about through transportation, large vehicles. Airplane crash and terrorism kind of round out the list, other man-made disasters that could affect us. So the large safety hazard, obviously being tornadoes and speaking with relation to weather. So just some tornado safety tips we have. Always pay attention and be prepared during severe thunderstorm, our warnings, and monitor the weather. Take tornado warnings serious and take immediate action to protect yourself and others. If outside, go inside and seek the best available shelter. Basements are the lowest level interior room away from windows. Most tornadoes occur in the afternoon or evening during the spring and summer, but can occur at any time of the day. Avoid downed power lines and avoid flooded roadways. So here in River Falls, we do have options for community members who may not live or be near a structure that would keep them safe during severe weather. We have the Hoffman Park Shelter. It's open to all members of the public, can hold up to 360 people, and it's open all day, every day, every day of the year. And this is a concrete reinforced structure, so it's very durable even in strong or severe storms. And then coming soon, we'll also have the Glen Park Storm Shelter as part of the new building going in at Glen Park. There'll be access there to, for people to stay safe during storms similar to the Hoffman Park Shelter. On just the, this is just the tornado scale, obviously zero being the lowest, EF5 going up to the highest wind speed of over 200 miles an hour. The structures within Glen Park would fall into that EF5 category of being a steel-reinforced concrete structures. If you're interested in weather, the National Weather Service offers courses or storm spotter courses. I just have a list of them there. It's kind of hard to see, but if you go to the National Weather Service site, you can click regionally to St. Croix County, and it'll bring you up the list, and it'll show you all the areas you can go to attend class if you want to become a storm spotter or just have a better background knowledge. They're open to the public. They do kind of fill up. Some of them can fill up, but there are a lot of options in this region. And just a little bit more about emergency preparedness. There's things you can do to prepare yourself for events that might be unforeseen, having a weather or a kit available with supplies of food and water, batteries, flashlight, first aid, personal medications and hygiene items, important family papers. A common phrase used in emergency management is, if you have to leave in a hurry, remember your pets, purses, and your prescription pills, the things that you might not be able to live without even for a shorter period of time. And then have a plan in place of contact people, you know, especially for your children, who they should be in touch with if an event were to occur and you'd be separated. Know your evacuation routes, and you can always be more prepared by having a good knowledge of CPR training. This is just a website. It covers all sorts of different disaster scenarios or with information that can help prepare you, so www.reddy.gov. Once you open the website, it's pretty self-explanatory. There's several different categories you can click on, and it just has some good basic information to help you out. And other weather resources, I've already mentioned the National Weather Service. They have a pretty comprehensive website with, you know, being able to attend classes and just all the other weather information you'd want. And then apps for your phone. A lot of the officers and all the squad-issued car, cell phones we have have radar available on them, so during a storm, you can watch live feed to track the storm or any changes. And then, excuse me, also available through Pierce County Emergency Management is the Everbridge program. It's a mass notification system. There's links to this on the police department website as well as the county website. But what Everbridge does is they can send out alerts for potential bad weather or safety hazards, sends notification through call, text, email. Basically, you go to the website, you enter your information and how you want to be contacted in any case of emergency. The Everbridge system can be selected regionally in relation to an event, and then it'll contact you through whatever service you've decided, really. And any other questions, obviously contact the police department or visit any of the websites available that I mentioned. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Chris. I got just a quick comment, too. You know, from time to time, I think we've all heard, oh, they set off the, you know, the warnings all the time or, you know, at the drop of a hat, but I want people to remember too that not too far from here in Spring Valley last year, there was a pretty devastating tornado. So if you hear those sirens go off, it's worth your time to pay attention and at least check it out. So that'd be my, my comment. But thank you for the presentation. Anybody else have anything? Okay. Thank you, Chris. Or Scott?
Thank you.
All right. Next, we're going to move on to public hearing. So we're going to close the council meeting, and we're going to open up a public hearing addressing the resolution of the vacation of the right-of-way within the city of River Falls. This is for the depot and the city station. Adopting this resolution would vacate right-of-way to provide additional building space for the depot project and space for utilities. Right-of-way proposed to be vacated includes the easterly 10 feet of Clark Street right-of-way between West Pine and West Cedar and a 55-foot-long or 2,025-square-foot portion of River Street. Is there anybody who has anything to say about this in public hearing?
I don't think you're going to point my going back up.
Well, you need to, so they can hear, yep, you need to, so they can hear it on the, on the tape. If there's anything new that you have to add, that would be great. No, there's nothing new. Whatever I said earlier, I just wanted to get a rev. Okay. Appreciate that. Anyone else? All right. Hearing nothing else, we'll close the, oh, okay. Again, if you have anything new to add from your previous comments, that would be great.
So getting out of the Navy, it was real rough transitioning because it was really difficult to find affordable housing. And I just learned that the apartment across the street was vacated. Was that related to the building or was that because of the flooding and everything being on a floodplain?
It's related to the building.
Oh, that hurts. But I got the clarification, and I'm just learning a lot. And again, I just, dang, that hits home because I've been talking to students as well because I'm a proud UWRF alumni, and housing has been a pretty big deal for a lot of students and students that want to stay, particularly sustainable agricultural students and Ag students that want to stay in River Falls after the university experience, after their college experience, need a place to live.
Ms. Evans, I need you to stay on topic with regard to the zoning.
Yeah, the zoning, I mean, if it could be utilized in a more productive manner, the one that meets the needs of the citizens, that's all. Thanks for.
Thank you.
Space.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. We're going to close the public hearing. We're going to reopen the council meeting, and I accept a motion.
Counsel President, I move for the approval of Number Five Resolution to Vacate Right-of-Way Within the City of River Falls Depot and City Stations.
Second.
All right. We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion in the council?
Yep. I just have a couple things I'd like to throw on top of, just to kind of reiterate some of the back history of this land. This land has been deemed since well before 2010 as an office space when Frisbee Architects was looking at doing an office building at this location. Basic searches on River Falls Journal, River Falls Journal has posted all of the city's public information as well as their own publications. And I know there's a comment stating that the city of River Falls is, folks would like to see the city of River Falls be more transparent. I think looking at other communities around us, not necessarily directly next to us, but you look across our state, Minnesota, the country, our city is phenomenal. You look at our website, you can search any topic you want. We are extremely transparent in the city of River Falls, and I commend the council for, and the staff for having a transparency movement. One thing I would like to note is we have a agenda that's put out every two weeks, and this is just a city council agenda. If you follow the city of River Falls council meetings, plan commissions, any of our boards, they are all public record. They are put out publicly at the library, at the city of River Falls, on the journal. There is many locations where you can find the public information, so the information's there. I commend folks that do follow that and are interested in our community, and just follow along weekly, and you'll, you'll see the updates.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm always going to save this for the next piece, but just, I'll go ahead and make my comments now and then vote twice. I am really grateful to Ms. Bowden, Ms. Richter, Mr. Conrad, and Ms. Evans for coming up and speaking tonight. And I just, I do want you to know that your comments have been heard. I think that I might disagree with them, but I absolutely have, they've had an impact on me. One of the things that came up in the discussion tonight was about the process and transparency, and you mentioned something along those lines. But in the, I think, two meetings ago, there were some comments to this topic. And since then, we've had a plan commission meeting, which I, which I listened to. And I recently went to our last plan, plan commission meeting or workshop, which was, one of the topics was Planned Urban Development Process. And that's the kind of development that this is, is what's called Planned Urban Development. And one of the things that I learned in that workshop, which I should have known already, was that a Planned Urban Development is a type of development that has a very compressed time process by ordinance in the city of River Falls. And we're looking, I think it's up for discussion as to whether we need to, and I made my comments not as a member of that committee but as a public citizen, that we need to broaden this timeline for Planned Urban Developments because it absolutely does not give the public time to digest the information. There's a lot of back and forth that has to happen between the developer and city staff in order to bring these projects into a plan that can be presented, but there isn't, with all of that, the time, the overall timeline isn't, isn't long enough in order to have enough public meetings, I think, in order, and to be able for us to process or for the plan commission, for that matter, to have public hearings, to have comments made, and then to take those comments back, then to take those comments to the developer or potential developer, have them incorporated into a plan, come back. And there's just a lot that needs to happen in order to have this kind of a open and collaborative process that I think I hear people talking about wanting. So I'm hoping to be a part of the plan commission, and I will be bringing that forward in the next year or, you know, in the next, if I can get on it. And I just, I just want you to know that, you know, that is a way that you have made a difference in this process. My, my main pieces of decision-making on this are, will we continue to have public access to the river? And we will continue to have public access to the river. This isn't a situation where developers buying all this land and they are going to cordon off the river and put a do-not-tresspass sign along the edge of the river. So we are going to have the path, we're going to have public access to the river. Our kids are going to be able to walk up and down that riverbank, get up onto the path, go back down to the river, and I think we have a good, you know, situation with that. I would definitely not support any development along this river between here and Division Street where public access wasn't a component of the plan. And I don't like that about North Main, and I don't, and I wouldn't be a part of it here. The other piece of this for me is the Kenny Corridor Plan, which we all, you know, participated in and adopted. And this project does, will fund part of that plan and up to the tune of a million or more dollars. And you just can't take that lightly. You know, we are an urban area here, and this is where kind of that urban environmental interface is going to happen. We're going to be freeing a lot of wild area south or downstream of this bridge right here and potentially bringing some trails and other things to the north. So I, you know, it's, there's a balance here, and we have to kind of walk the line, I think, between bringing in some funds to do these kinds of projects that will benefit, I think, the river, the urban river interface. And I think it's a reasonable compromise. I know I don't live on Clark Street, and I understand your concerns as immediate neighbors, and I, and I can appreciate that. I think from my perspective, the bigger city, the kind of the overall picture, I think it is a project that's worth, that's worth giving a chance. So I would encourage you to continue to follow the plan commission closely, and I would encourage any of you to offer your services to the mayor to be on the plan commission or another city body and have a direct influence on what happens down here on the river.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Anybody else?
I think, I want to thank everyone for their comments, and I think a big component that we're missing, the Elephant River Falls, is affordable housing. Every city needs a unique plan for affordable housing in their city, and that's something that we need to strive to work on better for the future of our city. So I thank you for your comments on that. I agree with what Hal said regarding the rest of it. We're looking forward to the future. The Kenny Corridor Plan does involve this and it brings it together. It's part of that. The one question I have, though, tonight is based on transportation. Will we have an adequate size for transportation to that area?
I guess I'd, I guess I'd ask that you keep it to zoning. This is a zoning action.
I meant that for the next.
Yeah. So let's, let's take that up in the next one, but, but again, I think this is about the zoning. Any other comments?
We're on.
We're on the vacate right-of-way.
Vacating the right-of-way.
Oh, I'm sorry. Vacating the right-of-way. I'm sorry. We're on the vacation.
Obviously, they're related.
Yeah.
Items, so.
Yeah.
It's up to the chair's discretion how far you want to wander.
Yeah. Anything else? No. All right. Hearing none, we'll vote on the, on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Ordinance 2019-06 to amend the official map and future land use map of the comprehensive plan of the city of River Falls. This is for the depot and the city station development areas. This is second reading and disposition. The second reading and disposition of this ordinance will rezone 310 North Clark Street and 300 River Street to R3 Multi-Family High Density District. Does the council have, oh, I got to. district. Does the council have, oh, I got to take us into public hearing. So at this time, we're going to close the council meeting and open up a public hearing for this. And again, if there's anything new to add to this, we'd love to hear from you. If, if not, then we will move forward.
Mr. Chair, might I suggest if, if you'd like to allow, at least allow the, if members of the public would like to be on the record for the public hearing, they could come up and just say.
Just reaffirm their previous comments.
Reaffirm my comments from the early.
Okay. We can do that.
That way, you've got a record of.
Okay.
Three, four, how many people speaking on the public hearing.
Okay.
It, it has, there's no additional effect. I just think it's.
Certainly. I think it's good.
Maybe helpful for you to have it in the record.
I think it's good procedurally.
Well, for the record, I'm Joe Conrad, and you can take my earlier comments that I made in the open part of the council. It'd be my same comments addressed to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to reaffirm my comments from earlier, and put them towards this section of the meeting. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Richter. Bowden.
My name is Elizabeth, and I again urge you to reconsider the rezoning proposal.
Thank you.
My name is Lauren Evans, and I'd love for you to reconsider the proposal. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Unfortunately, I can't hear, so I didn't hear the question, so I'll just.
What was the question?
If, if you.
I need to probably say I'm against it.
Okay. Could you, could you, ma'am?
So Jenny, you can just, just your home address.
Okay.
And this is to the rezoning of the property.
Yes, okay, and.
They're, they're taking a vote on if they should rezone the property for multi-family.
I'm opposed to rezoning the property.
Thank you. Okay. For the record, could you, could she read her name, or?
Jennifer King.
Jennifer King, okay. All right. Anyone else? All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing and reopen the council meeting. And at this time, I'd accept a motion.
Council President, I move for the approval of number six, ordinance number 2019-06 to amend the official zoning map and future land use map of the comprehensive plan of the city of River Falls depot and city stations development areas.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any discussion?
Again, I'd just like to throw out there, I think this is a great use of space. It has been slated for commercial use for some time. There's been a lot of public meetings. And I do want to note that there has been postings. There's a big sign up on the corner of the building there for public display, saying that the property is going to be used for such. I do appreciate the public comments that are out as well. We do have a housing study in the city of River Falls that displays that we have a housing need. As Sean noted, some of that is income-based. I think the city of River Falls is willing to work with developers that could bring those types of facilities to the city of River Falls. This one happened to address one of the housing needs of senior housing and more market-rate housing. Unfortunately, the city's not in, from my personal council perspective, the city's not in the business of housing outside of the housing authority realm. Like I said, if a private developer wants to come build housing in the city of River Falls, we'd love to look at all, all things to do with our housing study. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All right, well, we have a first and a second. We're done with the discussion, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? All right, motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. One item on the consent agenda tonight, resolution approving the 2019 Wisconsin DNR urban non-point source and stormwater program planning grant application. Adopting this resolution with authorized staff to apply for 2019 Wisconsin DNR urban non-point source and stormwater program planning grant to be used in conjunction with the Collins Outfall Study. Does anyone want to pull the item off the consent agenda?
Mr. Council President, I'd like to pull consent agenda item number seven.
All right, Mr. Downing pulls the item. There are no other items, so Mr. Downing, I'll ask you to go ahead with your comments or questions.
All right, I have two questions on this. My curiosity is, is what grants, other grants were available that were also 50/50 matching potential funds? And what happens if we don't get the grant? Those are my two questions for tonight.
I think probably the best one to answer that would be Ms. Raleigh. Crystal, would you mind coming to the microphone?
I'm your civil engineer, Crystal Raleigh, and I'll do my best to answer your questions, Councilman Downing. The first question was what other grants have been explored for this one at this point. I can answer that. Is, no other grants have been explored for this project at this point. What happens if the, if the project isn't funded? Right now, this is a planning study. We've acknowledged that this is a bad outfall. There's a lot of erosion happening there. We could fix that outfall within our current budget without a problem. That would be fine. This grant would allow us the opportunity to study that area and decide, is the current situation the best we could do for stormwater? The grant, if, if we're granted, we'll be able to do some modeling, and the, we'll get some options to see how much stormwater treatment that we could get from designing that outfall differently than it is right now. So in a nutshell, if we don't get the grant, we can reconsider, maybe look at other grants, or we can build the outfall back as it currently is, or we can look for other funding sources to change what we've got going there right now. So.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Crystal.
And I had a, I had a similar question. Oh, thank you, Crystal. I had a similar question for staff, and when I reviewed the packet, and I think Julie answered the question for me. This would have to be added to the CIP budget. And it would, you know, as we know, we do, we do planning for CIP and, and work study, our work, the work projects. This is not on it currently, but if we feel during the next CIP or the next work plans group that it needs to be added to it, that would be the place, in my opinion, to put it on. Is that, and Julie, anything to add there, Crystal?
Yeah, or as Crystal said, it might come out of the existing maintenance funds if it's, if it's a small enough dollar amount.
Small.
Right. So for the planning study, we could afford that out of our existing funds. Well, I'm sorry, with the grant money.
Grant, yeah.
With a reconstruction, as is, we could afford it with our existing funds. If we do this, if we get a grant, we do this planning study, and there's a great new plan for this area that could give us a lot of stormwater removals. At that point, we'd look for putting that on the CIP and getting some funding going.
Because simply rebuilding it is only going to make this process rear its ugly head. Again, at some point down the road, we're going to have the same erosion problems and everything else.
Yes.
So rebuilding it's not the, not the, probably the best idea.
Probably not.
Okay.
It's, yeah, it's on 30 years, is, 30 years ago it was constructed. I should note, too, that applying for this grant, if, if we were granted these funds, the urban non-point source planning grant is one grant, and then the DNR also offers a construction grant. Projects that are funded through the planning grant often are set up well for receiving construction grant funds. So fingers crossed, we would get a planning grant, which would lend itself well to a future project.
Oh, great. Okay.
So.
Good to know.
Yeah.
Mr. Council President, I move approval for consent agenda item number seven.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Crystal. Number eight, ordinance, ordinance is a resolution. Resolution regarding extension of Highview Meadows additional preliminary plat. The adoption of this resolution would grant a five-year extension to the Highview Meadows fourth addition preliminary plat. Does council have any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
All right, Mr. Downing, go ahead.
All right. During the five-year extension, do residents have an opportunity to request fiber for quicker internet speeds? And also, how does this apply to the entire city if they also want quicker internet speeds? You can treat it as two separate questions, though.
Well, it's, it's, it's just the plat. There's nothing there yet. It's just the plan for it. There's nothing in place yet. It's not, it's planted out, but there's no, there's no roads in there, there's no curb and gutter, there's no utilities, there's no, there's no services in there yet.
Okay. So maybe my question's more based on the timeliness of like, when is there an, is there an opportunity?
When they would come, go ahead.
So I think we have two primary options in the city of River Falls that go into these developments. One would be AT&amp;T, and one would be Comcast. I know one of them offers up to almost one gig speeds in the city of River Falls. So that's all I'll say.
The, the utilities and the services, and Amy can speak better to this, but the utilities and the services really come in when they come in with their, with their, the preliminary plat. So it's, it's, it's a bit premature.
God, I can just talk a little bit to that. So when the utilities do go in, when electric and water and sewer do go in, I know our electric department is always trying to entice joint trench situations with other utility providers, including AT&amp;T and Comcast, and I'm sure they'll be trying to deliver their highest and best services they can. But our utility, when we're doing utilities, when a project develops, we do encourage the telecoms to come in joint trench with us.
Hey, everybody.
But I, what they're offering at that point in time, I really don't know that, but I'm guessing they're going to be able to offer their latest and greatest.
And when you say joint trench, you mean one hole in the ground with all their conduits?
Correct.
So you can pull all their fiber and all their cable through.
Correct. Yes, and we do that just for, to make it simpler and less trenching and less redundancy. So that's, that's the reason we do it. It saves everybody money. It saves space in the, in the, in the easement areas and all that, so. But as far as the speeds and stuff of the telecoms, I can't speak to that per se, but I'm assuming they're always offering their latest and greatest.
I think we might be getting a little far afield here from what's in front of us. We're just, we're just approving the preliminary plat, so.
Actually, we're just extending.
I'm sorry, extending, thank you. You were just extending.
Extending a plat that's already been approved.
That's already been approved.
Yeah.
So let's, let's come back to that. So.
You need a motion?
I need a motion and a second.
Mr. President, I move we approve the resolution regarding extension of Highview Meadows additional preliminary plat.
Second.
All right, so we have a first and a second. Any other discussion about the plat? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, motion carries. Resolution number nine, regarding the police building design, police building design and construction management. Adoption, adoption of this resolution would, would award the contract for design services to Wold Architects to remodel 2015 Prairie Drive for the Police Department facility, with a proposed start date of the spring of 2019. Any questions? All right, I'd accept a motion.
Mr. Council President, I move for the approval of number nine, resolution regarding police building design and construction management.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any comments? All right, hearing none. We will vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next, we'll move on to administrator's report, and then we'll ask if Scott has any questions, but I see he just left, so maybe Julie can pitch hit for him.
He left us.
Maybe he didn't want to make comments.
I guess I'm on. Want to remind the council, there's a council retreat next Tuesday from noon to 5:00 PM. And also, following that, the city's organizational meeting. Want to make sure everybody can attend. Hopefully, the mayor will be able to attend that.
Julie, if I may ask something on that, I think the clerk's office had proposed that we, the, the folks that need to take the oath of office.
To take the oath, was it before?
Do that on the 16th. I think they actually need to do that before that, and I think they're talking about that because of the deadline. It has to be done before the 16th. I just want to kind of remind the council of that.
I would have to check with her on that. I, I was, I think she mentioned that noon on the 16th, she was planning on it?
No, I think they're relooking at that.
We'll be in touch if there's a change.
State guidelines are different.
Yeah, appreciate that.
But this really isn't a council meeting, though.
No, but the folks that have to take the oath have to take it before a certain deadline on date by the state law. So I think that 16th is too late, but I might be wrong.
We can, we can take that.
We'll let you know if, if there's a change.
We can take that offline. We'll take that offline. Kevin, would you like to make a comment, if you would please, about the, about the electronics recycling?
Electronics recycling is coming up, I believe, is, is it this Saturday, next Saturday?
I thought it was this Saturday.
Next Saturday, the 19th, I believe that date is, is 8:00 AM until noon, I believe. That's at the, on address out at the.
I think it's the 20th. I thought I saw the 20th.
The 20th, okay, 19th is Friday. So it's a Saturday, the 20th.
Yep.
And if you are a city of River Falls utility customer, any utility customer, if you live in an apartment, or if you haven't paid a utility bill, you're eligible. You can bring your electronics out there that day for free. Some of the larger items, like refrigerators and things like that, I believe are a cost, but this is mainly for monitors and electronic-type equipment.
TVs, monitors.
TVs, monitors, keyboards.
And is that to the city garage, or where?
City garage on Benson Street.
Okay.
850 Benson.
50 Benson?
Boy, I'm right around it tonight.
50, do we hear 10?
So it's the 20th, not the 19th, and it's 950 Benson, not 850.
We'll get her, we'll get her right here at some point. All right, anything else on the administrator's report that anybody has any questions about, or comments? No? All right. We will move on. The mayor has asked us to look favorably upon two appointments to the utility advisory board. He'd like to report Kevin, I'm sorry, Patrick Richter through April of 2022, and reappoint Kevin Swanson through April of 2022. And we will need a motion on that, please. Mr. Mayor, I move for the, Mr. President, I move for the mayor's appointments.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any conversation or discussion about the appointments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a move to, first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.